Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting, March 24, 2021. I'd like to ask our Superintendent Charle to leave us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few changes to the meeting agenda. Item M1, Schedule A3. Item L2. Item L3. Appointment of Superintendent. Is appointment of Superintendent? And item L1. And item M1 cover page. Now we'll move on to student recognition.
This is probably the most enjoyable part of our evening, and I would like to begin in asking Ms. Roseanne DeBella, who is the building principal of Mount Elementary School, to come to the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm honored tonight to present to you an amazing student from Mount Elementary School, Kayla Hart. Any day that I get to see Kayla in her classroom or the hallways at Mount is a good day. You cannot help but feel the positive energy coming from Kayla. She is the most passionate and compassionate student I know. When Kayla sees a problem, she doesn't rest until that problem is solved. Kayla realized that having a food pantry at Mount was an opportunity to solve a problem. She recognized the need that exists in our school community to help support our struggling families. She knows that children who have nutritious food to eat are better students, they are better able to learn and achieve at higher levels in all things. Kayla thought of a way to raise money to purchase gift cards to donate to our food pantry. Kayla has a talent for making beautiful bracelets. She made and sold bracelets, and more bracelets, and more bracelets, and more bracelets, until she was able to donate $750 in Stop &amp; Shop gift cards to our food pantry. She came into my office last week and casually handed me the gift cards with a detailed accounting of every sale that she had made, as if it were no big deal. You see, to Kayla, doing the right thing every day is just what you're supposed to do. You should help others whenever you can. Well, we are here tonight to let Kayla know this is a big deal. Kayla, your kindness and compassion for others is a gift to us all. I present to the Board Kayla Hart.
Thank you.
You did a wonderful job. Very proud of you. Good evening to Central Administration and to our Board of Education. Thank you for all the hard work that you do during these most difficult times. I'm here tonight with great pleasure to introduce you all to Riley Meckley for a recognition. Riley has proven herself once again to be a student with a passion for learning about the social studies and civic responsibility. Riley is a junior at Ward Melville High School. She is a member of the student government, competes on the varsity soccer team, and has earned scholarship, athlete distinctions. Riley has earned two Gold Level Presidential Volunteer Service Awards for service to the community and the school. Riley is also an appointed member to the Town of Brookhaven Youth Bureau, where the mission is to support and encourage the moral, physical, mental, and social well-being of youth in the Town of Brookhaven. While I am not sure when she has the time, but in her spare time, Riley enjoys politics, biking, skiing, and reading. This evening, we recognize Riley for her wonderful success in the American Legion High School Oratorical Contest. During a series of local competitions, Riley proved herself to be the standout first-place winner. From there, Riley moved on to the New York State Competition, which took place on March 6th in Albany, New York, where she placed third in the state. Her ability to interpret, speak about, and understand the United States Constitution so articulately shows a student far beyond her years when it comes to government, civics, and citizenship. Riley's speech focused on several amendments from the Bill of Rights and their application to education today. Riley's keen insight, opinions, and hard work were evident as she created and memorized an almost nine-minute oration for the competition. In addition to her main oration, Riley did an outstanding job with three supplemental orations having to do with different articles from the United States Constitution.
to leave at this time, and we're not asking you to, you're certainly welcome to stay.
I am also pleased to share with the Board that Riley has also just been selected to
We would completely understand and would not be in any way offended.
receive the Students Building Bridges Award from the Jewish Community Relations Council
So congratulations, Kayla. Congratulations, Riley. We hope you call us in five years from now when you graduate.
of Long Island. Riley was nominated for this award based on her commitment to volunteerism and civic
Yeah, there'll probably be a job waiting for you, for sure.
engagement and citizenship. This virtual awards program will take place on Thursday, April 15th. Riley, we are so proud of you and are pleased to support you as you continue to pursue your interests in oration and your future career path as a social studies teacher. Congratulations, Riley.
Minutes from March 10th, 2021. Have a motion? Ms. Gish, Mr. Vizel, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. We're moving on to reports. Jesse Behar is not here today, so we'll go to item C, Preliminary Budget Presentation. Mr. Carlson?
Thank you. By the way, I was fortunate enough to have seen Riley give her speech in one of her practice sessions, and it was absolutely amazing. And unfortunately for all of you, I'm the one speaking about the budget tonight instead of her. She would be much more entertaining and interesting, so, sorry. You'd think Kathy was, like, leaving soon or something. Okay, there we go. All right. So the last board meeting, we spoke about the budget somewhat. I'll give a little bit of an update, where there's not a whole lot of news since then, but we will talk about, a little bit about staffing plans for next year, and when I get to those slides, I will turn that over to the superintendent. So, we have tonight, we have one more. At the next board meeting, where we'll be going over the budget, and at that night is when the board is scheduled to adopt the budget, that will be put up for vote. And then May 5th is a budget hearing. Sometimes that's the official term that we have to use. It's, you know, the two weeks before the budget vote, we present the budget. And then, of course, May 18th, third Tuesday in May, is the budget vote date. As far as voting procedures for this year, we have not heard anything, so we're assuming that it will be back to normal, as far as meaning back vote in the schools in person, as opposed to last year where it was all mail-in. Well, absentee ballots last year. Of course, absentee ballots will still be available this year, but unless we hear otherwise, it will be back at Jelenis, Murphy, and Ward Melville High School. So the tax cap, that's where we, for the past 10 years now, where we start our budget process. And as same as always, there are a number of factors that determine what the cap is. Every district's cap is a little bit different based on those variables, and it changes year to year and district to district. So our cap for next year is 1.37%. And as we previously discussed, the proposed budget will have a tax increase of 1.85%, which is obviously above that, and that means it will require 60% of the voters to vote yes in order for it to pass. Why are we going over the tax cap? Well, we've been talking about this a lot lately, too. Well, we have spent, now it's coming up on $7 million in COVID-related expenses, and that's what the cost has been to have our students be able to attend school five days a week, all the way back to the first day of school in September. And that's something that almost no other district anywhere has been able to do, so we're very proud of that. Most of that additional money is, went to additional instructional staffing, and what that has enabled us to do is make smaller class sizes, which has enabled us to do the six-foot distancing within the classrooms. And so what that has done is, when somebody does test positive, or has tested positive, the entire class does not need to quarantine. We've all seen in the news, in a lot of other districts, sometimes a whole building will have to close, and what we don't see in the papers is all the time, all over Long Island, where classes in buildings have to quarantine for a week or two. We have not had to do that at all. And that's solely based on what the Department of Health is who determines who has to quarantine, and what the number-one criteria that they've been using is six feet for 10 minutes or more. So because we made the smaller class sizes, have the six-foot distancing, that's why we have not had to quarantine so much when somebody tests positive. And that's really been key, but again, it costs a lot of money. So where did that money come from? We did not have all of that in our budget this year, but there was special legislation passed by the governor that is allowing us to use money from our reserves for COVID-related expenses this year, and we have done that. The message we had gotten from the community, going back to last summer and the Board of Direction, going back to last summer, was you have reserves? If you need them, use them. We want kids back in school, and that's what we did. But that special legislation allowing that also requires us to pay back the money to the reserves. So we need to start doing that next year. So, and as far as having all of those, the health and safety protocols, including the additional instructional staffing, in place for next year, because we don't know what school's going to look like in September. We need to be prepared. We don't want to go backwards. We want to be able to have all the kids that want to attend in school, in school, five days a week next year, just as we did this year. So we have to have all of that still rolled into next year's budget, plus we have to start paying back reserves. That's why we're going above the tax cap. One of the things that the, in early discussions, the Board of Education had given us was, well, going above the tax cap is one thing, but keep it under 2%, and that's where the 1.85% comes from. One of the other things that factors into that is, well, where are we in state aid? And I had federal aid now because of the stimulus, federal stimulus money. So the governor's budget proposal for next year gives us a state aid decrease of $177,000. I would be optimistic to say that when the state budget is finally finished, finalized, that decrease at least would be wiped out. There was a report just came out today from the Association of School Business Officials, where the New York State Budget Directors said they found an additional $5 billion in revenue. I don't know where they, whatever, that's different, sorry. But that was the word that was used, "found." But he was also careful to say, that doesn't mean there will be a state aid increase. He said they might not have to decrease state aid because of that additional revenue. And then also, now with the federal stimulus money, now we don't have any details yet as far as how much are we going to get, how much anyone else is going to get, and what are going to be the parameters around that? Is it going to be for certain expenses? Is it just blanket, here you go? And so what we look back to is, in 2008, when there was the recession, and state aid was cut drastically, there was federal money to help out. It was called the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. However, what the, what the New York State did was, they, we got the money from the federal government, but our state aid was adjusted accordingly in a negative same-dollar amount, and the state said, well, we didn't reduce your state aid, we just adjusted it. So that federal money that was, that came to the schools was also, went right out the other door, or should say, we never got it in state aid. So we don't know if that's going, and then what happened after two years of the federal money coming in, that dried up. The state then never made up, or didn't make up the difference, and that was what we, they had termed the gap elimination adjustment. As if you remember, over, from 2010 through 2016, Three Village alone was our, state aid was cut by $32.4 million during those years, and that was because of when that federal money dried up. So we don't know if that's going to happen again with this federal stimulus money, but we want to be prepared just in case. And just, this may or may not be indicative of what's going to happen. So here's from the New York State Aid website, when the governor's budget proposal was released, and they'll just give you, so, current year, current year's state aid, there is a line item, Federal Cares Act Restoration. In our case, it was $190,848. Okay, fine. But there's also a pandemic adjustment of minus $190,848. So that federal money that came in, the state took. In the governor's proposal now for next year, there is COVID-19, now this is, this is back a couple of months ago, so this is not this newest stimulus package that was just approved. That we have no details on yet for how it will affect us. COVID-19 is for next year. COVID-19 supplemental stimulus, $569,684. Okay, sounds good. But then there's a local district funding adjustment, minus $569,684. Exact same thing. Federal money's coming in, the state says, well, since you have that, we don't have to pay it to you. So we can't bank on, well, the federal government is going to bail us out. So that's, all of that is why we're going above the cap. So we want to make sure we are able to have all of our kids in school, five days a week next year, at least all of those that want to attend in person. We don't know yet about remote for next year. We don't know any of that. Until the governor and the State Aid Department set up some kind of rules for opening school next year, we don't know, but we need to be prepared either way. So the tax levy. So the average, when we say average homeowner in Three Village, the increase under this proposed budget would be $222 for the year. If we went at the tax cap, the 1.37% increase, the increase for that same taxpayer would be, would have been $164. The difference is $58 for the year. While I'm on that, I would like to mention, if anyone saw the article in Newsday today, where the title of the article is District Seat, it was on front page and then page three, there is a quote that is attributed to me, and the quote, what's in quotations is accurate. However, I just want everyone to know, none of us ever actually spoke directly with Newsday. They asked for information. We put together an information sheet. We sent that through the public relations firm that we contract through Bozey's, Jen's company, to give to Newsday. They took a piece of this correctly, that's in here, but said Jeff Carlson, District's Deputy Superintendent, yada, 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 and put in quotations that, which makes it sound like I gave it as a quote. Now that by itself, I don't really have an issue with, even though it wasn't a quote from me, it was just came off our information page. Here's my, here's, here's the, what I want to point out to everyone who might have read the article. It goes on to say that, "He said such funding," meaning me, "would needs to be maintained next year, and would cost the average taxpayer only $58 more than if Three Village kept within its cap." Now, if you look at what we gave them, I would never, ever, none of us would use the word "only" in talking about the tax increase. We don't say, it's only $58, or it's only $222, so we never use that. That was Newsday used the word "only" and attributed it to me. So that I had an issue with. Jen's Company contacted Newsday today to register a complaint about that, not that that will do anything, but just so you know. Now we're up to the staffing changes.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. So I'll start with elementary. Many of you may remember, we have had a full complement in the past of health educators delivering instruction to our students in grades K through 6. As a result of some of the budgetary constraints that we had over the years due to the gap elimination adjustment, that was pulled back, and we've been gradually adding that back. This year, we had health educators in grades 4 through 6, and a half hour a week in grades 3. Next year, we will be restoring that program, which is a very robust health education program in grades K through 6. So we're excited about that moving forward. At the secondary level, last year, as a result of the distancing and other issues that we had to deal with budgetary-wise, we eliminated the math labs at Ward Melville High School. Those will all be restored next year, as well as many of the electives across disciplines in grades 7 through 12, so that we're going to close some of the gaps with regard to the study halls that students have. So we're excited about that moving forward. Additionally, at our elementary level, two of our elementary schools, well, actually three of them, do not have full-time social workers. They're either sent over to one of our elementary schools that have a larger population of students, or to some of our out-of-district placements. So next year, all of our elementary schools will have a full-time social worker. We're adding an additional social worker to address the larger buildings, elementary school buildings, as well as our out-of-district placements. So we understand the importance of mental health at all levels, and that has been definitely a focus by the district and supported and endorsed by our Board of Education. We have not reduced, in fact, anything in this district. We have added to our mental health services despite budgetary constraints, so kudos to our board and to our community for that support. In addition, we will have a 504 elementary chairperson. What this will do is, we have instructional consultants at each one of our elementary schools. Those instructional consultants, part of their job, really, an important part of their job, is to work with the staff in terms of instructional goals, and this will give them, this will free up their time, so they won't be any longer working on the 504. A chairperson will be primarily dedicated to that purpose. And as you can imagine, teaching remotely music can be a major challenge, which has been in terms of the technology that needs to be in place, and our district has done extraordinarily well in that area. We will be adding a music technology teacher for next year. So these additions will all support student learning and growth. Thank you.
So as I had mentioned, unless we hear otherwise, we're assuming we'll be going back to normal voting procedures, and that will be at Ward Melville High School, which, Murphy Junior High School and Jelenis Junior High School. As in past years, the Mount Attendant Zone votes at Murphy, the Sotorki Attendant Zone votes at Jelenis, and Arrowhead, Nassaukeg, and Minnesotucky vote at Ward Melville. Those schools are much easier for us to properly secure, as far as people coming into and leaving the building. As you know, we can't ask for ID or check anyone in when they come to vote. So what we will continue to do is review staffing needs with our building principals and in regard to enrollment and course requests and that kind of thing, and then bring back to the board any recommended changes that we would look to include in next year's budget. And that's it. That's all I had, unless there are any questions from the board.
Any questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Moving on to our next report, District-Wide School Safety Plan. Mr. Blum?
Thank you, Board of Education. So tonight before you, you have the approved draft for our District-Wide School Emergency A little bit of history. So historically, we have had a very solid plan here. This is the district plan, it's available on the webpage, that basically, generically talks about our health and safety and security policies district-wide. You've been approving that at the July reorg meetings for several years. A little bit of an administrative change with the state. First, we changed the name to what is called now the District-Wide School Emergency Plan. Now, this kind of piggybacks off last month, the March 10th meeting, where Dr. Baum talked about policies 8130 and 8131. 8130, school emergency planning, 8131, pandemic response. So this kind of piggybacks with that. In the plan that you have received, on page 35, you will see the two additions to the plan that are very important. One is our pandemic response. And as we talked about on the March 10th meeting, the pandemic response has some parts to it that are very important, and again, it kind of goes with what Deputy Superintendent Carlson talked about, our ability to have our schools open five days a week. There are actions for pandemic response, communication procedures, risk reduction, cleaning, and a clinical response. So that had to be added to our plan via the state education law. Right after that is the Public Health Continuation of Operations Plan. And that's basically that if we follow our pandemic response, it kind of talks about how we can continue to operate our schools, whether it be adding technology, giving informational technology equipment to our teachers or students that need it. We can continue our teaching remotely, whether people are quarantined, we bring supplies to them. All of that is part of our continuation plan. These were two administrative changes that were required by state law. We put them in, the rest of the plan is solid. There were some player changes, and the one thing you're going to do this year is, we're going to adopt the plan again by September 1st. And then thereafter, every year, September 1st, we'll adopt the District-Wide Plan, as opposed to the July reorg meeting. Also understand that this plan does not have confidential information in it. It's on the web. We also gave the opportunity for stakeholders to look at the plan. For 30 days, we gave it to staff, we let the unions look at it, we had our external stakeholders, police, fire, look at the plan, and it's solid. There are actions for pandemic response, communication procedures, risk reduction, cleaning, and a clinical response. So that had to be added to our plan via the state education law. Right after that is the Public Health Continuation of Operations Plan. And that's basically that if we follow our pandemic response, it kind of talks about how we can continue to operate our schools, whether it be adding technology, giving informational technology equipment to our teachers or students that need it, we can continue our teaching remotely. Whether people are quarantined, we bring supplies to them, all of that is part of our continuation plan. These were two administrative changes that were required by state law. We put them in, the rest of the plan is solid, there were some player changes, and you're, and the one thing you're going to do this year is we're going to adopt the plan again by September 1st. And then thereafter, every year, September 1st, we'll adopt the District-Wide Plan as opposed to the July reorg meeting. Also understand that this plan does not have confidential information in it. It's on the web, we also gave the opportunity for stakeholders to look at the plan for 30 days, we gave it to staff, we let the unions look at it, we had our external stakeholders, police, fire, look at the plan, and it's solid. So hopefully, you will approve that this evening, the two major changes in the plan. We'll look at it again for September 1st. And just remember that in each building, we have a specific emergency plan for every one of the schools. In that plan are things that we can't show on the webpage, maps, locations, security procedures, confidential contact information, and some other things in security and safety that really are not available for the general public to see, it's for the individual buildings. So that's where we're at with this, it's very simple, administrative changes basically, but adding those two parts, pandemic response and the continuation plan, should we have that. Now you know this is driven by COVID, but the pandemic response could be something else. If something else occurs, we will follow basically the same procedures. You notice the word COVID is not in the, in the plan, it's, we're going to run it as a pandemic response, but it can be adapted to any other type of emergency. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Baum.
Thank you.
Moving on to items for board discussion, do we have any items? No? Seeing none, we'll move on to items for board action. E, Notice of Public Hearing, Budget Vote, and Election. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Gish, Mr. Viso, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. F, Approval of District-Wide School Emergency Plan? Can I have a motion? Mr. Connors, Ms. Bevlinka, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Approval of Contract with Outside Service Providers for Special Education Services.
This is to add one, one provider for special ed services as needed?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Viso, Mr. Cornrich, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Motion passes. H, Approval of Health and Welfare Service Contract?
This is a contract with the Brentwood School District for four Three Village resident students that attend a private school located within the Brentwood School District for health services for those students.
Can I have a motion? Ms. Gish, Mr. Cornrich, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Acceptance of Donations?
We have four donations tonight. The first is a Chicaring Upright Piano donated by James and Deborah, Deborah Davenport to the district. Another is a check in the amount of $120 donated by the Three Village STEM Enrichment Foundation to the Murphy Science Olympiad Team. The next is a scholarship check in the amount of $500 donated by the Inter-District Council of Superintendents to the Ward-Melville High School Scholarship Fund. And the last is a, as we heard about earlier this evening, a donation of $750 in Stop and Shop gift cards from Kayla, as we heard her speak, and she was adorable, and that's on the agenda for acceptance tonight also.
Dr. Kermin? Mr. Cornrich, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Approval, okay, Approval of Side Letter Agreement?
The side letter is...
I'm sorry, we skipped J.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Surplus Textbooks.
Declaration of Surplus Textbooks? Mrs. Gish, Mr. Viso, any questions? No? All in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Approval of Side Letter Agreement?
Yes, this side letter is providing a non-precedent setting modification of the administrator's contract dealing with the effective date of retirement eligibility.
Can I have a motion? Mr. Connors, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of Extension of the Retirement Deadline to Receive the Retirement Incentive for the Employees Named in Confidential Schedule A.
Yes, this is, this is an MOA that will extend the retirement incentive for the employer identified in the confidential schedule.
Mr. Cornrich, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Extension of Probation Period from TVSAI? Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gish, Mr. Viso, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Motion passes. Going on to M1 cover page, that's a new, that's just a replacement page, M1 Schedule A3. Can I have a motion? Are we, we're going to go, we have two additions. L2 and L3. Item L2, Appointment of Superintendent for 2021 and 2022. Can I have a motion? Mr. Kermin, Mr. Viso, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Motion passes. The board just approved the contract for our superintendent for the next school year 2021 and 2022. We are pleased and honored to have Cheryl Pettisich as our superintendent for the next school year. Thank you for your leadership in navigating the district through this tough time, and to say the least, challenging year.
Thank you, Cheryl.
L3, Appointment of Superintendent for 2020, 2022 to 2025. Can I have a motion? Mr. Viso, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Motion passes. We just approved the signing of a contract for Kevin Scanlon to become our next superintendent. Hiring a superintendent for our district is one of the most critical tasks the school board is tasked with, and we take that responsibility very seriously. Over the last several years, we have taken a very careful approach towards succession planning and have worked diligently to cultivate future leaders at all levels from within our current staff. Throughout the current challenges the district has faced, Kevin Scanlon has been a steady hand advising and supporting our superintendent and helping to chart a course through unknown waters. The board has tremendous confidence in Kevin Scanlon's knowledge, experience, and ability to lead our district, and we are proud to announce that he will be the next superintendent of the Three Village Central School District. So now we move on to M1, Schedule A3. Can I have a motion?
It's all.
Oh, it's all the schedules?
Yes.
Okay. So can I have a motion, please? Ms. Gish, Mr. Viso, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Moving on to personal matters, oh, let me do that. One instructional? We're going over one instructional, right? We did both? Okay, I'm sorry.
Just do non-instructional.
Two, non-instructional. Ms. Gish, Mr. Cornrich, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Motion passes. It's been a long, long day, very long start of time. Moving on to N, Recommendation of Committee for Special Education and Subcommittee Meetings for the 504 Plan Meeting Stated? Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gish, Mr. Viso, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Moving on to L, Recommendation of Committee for Preschool Special Education Meetings of February, for the date stated? Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Cornrich, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, Abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to informational items of interest. Yes, Cheryl?
So this evening is a special evening. Kathleen Sanponya, our current district clerk. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Kathleen Sanponya, who will officially retire on March 30th of 2021. Ms. Sanponya has been a loyal and trusted employee of the past decade, serving our Board of Education and our school community with professionalism, dedication, and expertise. We wish her good health and happiness in retirement, and hope that she will have time to enjoy special moments with family and friends doing those things that bring her the greatest joy. She will be missed by all. Would you like to say anything? You don't have to, but...
I'd like to thank Jeff for giving me the heads up on switching over tonight, I'm a little... No, I just really would like to thank the board and the district for the opportunity to work here these past years. It has really been a pleasurable job, for the most part. And it, it was a perfect time for me to, to work here, it worked with my family's schedule, offered me a lot of opportunities for flexibility, which was very helpful, and this was rewarding, and I enjoyed it, and I will miss everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to make a statement on Inger Germano. While we are very happy that Inger Germano will be joining our Three Village staff and family as our newly appointed district clerk, we are saddened by her departure from the Board of Education. Since 2011, Ms. Germano has served our school community with a tireless effort, passion, and devotion. Her commitment to doing what is best for our students has never wavered, and her responsiveness to school and community needs has always reflected a thoughtful, balanced, and caring approach. She is a true professional who leads and serves with grace, integrity, and compassion. She will be sorely missed as a board member, but will be a most welcome addition to the, an asset to the Three Village school staff. Inger.
If I could just add one thing before, before you do that. Inger, you know, I've, I've known you since, since the days when our kids were at the Montessori school together, and I first recognized your, your skill and your, your leadership qualities when we, we served as president and vice president over there. And I was, I was so happy to see you elected to this board where your, your sharp mind and your, your wise leadership and more than anything else, your care and concern for students, one, you're the, the respect of, of our board and of the, of the, of the community. And I'm, I'm so proud of the, the work that you've done here, and you are, you're a wise leader, you're an excellent board member, but more than anything else, I'm really proud to call you my friend. So congratulations, Inger.
And I just want to say one thing. I've known you for a very long time as well, and I am very proud of our, our growing relationship, colleague, friend, two moms with teenage kids that like to bounce off each other issues. But I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, because it means so much to me, your dedication, your volunteerism, and your, your, everything that you stand for, for this district, for the students, for the staff, the teachers, administration, so on and so forth. Your heart has always been in the right place, and I adore you and admire you for your service that you have given to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you all for the kind words, and as we all know, I am very shy in public speaking, so I'll make this brief. But I'm really going to miss my service on the board. This was not an easy decision to make, but the right decision for me and my family at the moment. So I value all of your opinions, your professionalism, your friendships that I have gained over the years, and I look forward to working with you in a different capacity. And thank you so much for all your hard work the years, and your continued support and future. Thank you.
Thank you. So selfishly, we get Inger, so we're all good here. We would also like to take this opportunity to recognize and congratulate Jonathan Cornrich, who has been newly elected to the Brookhaven Town Board in a special election that took place yesterday. Jonathan's overwhelming victory is a true testament to his dedication to community service. We're excited for this well-deserved victory and wish him much success.
Jonathan, Inger, your last one.
The last one.
There you go.
Okay, so now we're moving on to public participation up to 30 minutes of length, and we have one that was emailed in from Marlo Dumbrath. Dear Mrs. Pettisich and the Board of Education members, thank you for ensuring that our students had the opportunity to be in school the entire school year thus far. It was, it was a feat that has not gone unnoticed or unappreciated by the community. My question, who actually makes the final decision regarding if there will be a remote option in 2021, 22 school year? Will this solely be the call of the superintendent, the Board of Ed? Will there be a public hearing or vote? I would like to specifically know the process for making this decision. Thank you, Marlo Dumbrath.
So at this point, we do not have any definitive guidance from the State Education Department regarding a remote option for students, and so based on the data that we currently have available to us, right now, we have 86% of our students are in person, 14% are remote. We are planning to put a survey forth to our school community in May, in, in the hopes that we'll have some more guidance in asking parents, just preliminarily, whether they would be interested in in-person or a remote option. The fact is, COVID has not gone away at this point, and, and despite there, I know there are states in, in the nation that have eliminated a lot of the protocols, but we are not yet there. Our governor has not encouraged us to remove these protocols. The CDC did come out with some guidelines, but again, the devil is always in the details, so we need to look at that information carefully. The Department of Health has not yet weighed in, and nor has the State Education Department. So at this point, if we are to project forward, I would surmise that there would still be a remote option available for our students. Remember, there are people in our community whose families are immunocompromised, or the students themselves. So until we really see other kind of data, I'm going to say that we would definitely be offering some kind of a remote option. I suspect that we will have more students in person than we currently have had for this year. So that will be wait and see, and we will keep the community apprised as we move forward.
Thank you. I'd like to now have on adjournment, we, the board needs to go back into executive session, so I'd like to have a motion to go back in executive session, please. Mrs. Gish? Mrs. Bevlinka, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for coming this evening.